What?
It looks like the YouTube started.
Have we screened?
I think so, yeah.
Oh, thanks. Good. Thank you very much. Well, anyway, as I said earlier, started this party workshop is when the select board has done for us a number of years now. And it's morphs as well in my five years on the board. Learning program, I think Audrey's cover memo covers it pretty well as to what occurred over the years. And you sound like more thing of the information that she provided on terms of the workshop. Priority workshop. Fundamentally, the priorities are to, as Andrew wrote was an example, is to punch at the time of the staff of the town because we don't have unlimited staff. So categorically, we're looking at not specific action items. There's nothing to do with that. It has to do with the priorities and general areas. For example, the seven that have been consistently following us for the past few years are listed in your memo. Which basically summarizing, but the resiliency to climate change, renewable energy and conservation, delivery of better public safety services. Broadband has been on the list with the biggies, creating opportunities to deal with affordable housing. Housing in general is consistent with our, one of our key documents, which is the comprehensive plan. And finally, redeveloping, upgrading key infrastructure networks, including complete streets, which includes pedestrians and bicycles, stormwater, I and I, which basically is the one of our bugaboo's in our waste system because we've been working on it for years and still trying to find the crack in the pipe kind of thing, to find out where this water is coming from. That has to go through our wish our turn and improving communication. But obviously, none of the priorities are equal in terms of their commitment of time of staff. I think we know that there are certain of these priorities that take a lot more hours of staff for that item than others do. We have to keep that in mind because I think one of the, from my perspective at least over the last years, I think we, with our exuberance and it's compliment really to the select board and to Audrey, and tried to take on a lot. And we had a list, I think in the prior year, there was like forty some hard priorities that we listed though, you know? That was, that was too much. It was way too much. We can't, it'd be nice to have, but we just, we just can't do, we don't have the staff to accomplish. That's why somebody I'm saying I'm not going to accomplish today. So with that, Audrey, if you want to add anything else before we just start talking general priorities?
Well, I, I mean, I would say that, you know, where we have a lot of sort of major projects that have been identified and some are in process, some are, you know, in the planning stages. I think that, you know, what's going to be really important for me and the staff is more the policy level issues that you want to tackle, whether it be, you know, some sort of ordinance amendment or, you know, priorities in terms of enforcement of current ordinances. I think that those are some of the things that, you know, coming at it today would be really good for us to have a good idea of what the general consensus is amongst the board on.
And the key word there is policy. We are responsible policy, of course. And that's what the staff has to help us develop in terms of what, wherever we want policy to be developed. That's the purpose of today. Again, there are numerous action items can fall off of any one of these items. We're not here to discuss that today. We're here to discuss the priorities for town staff in terms of where they're going to spend their time. So I think you've seen the, what I call the four seven. Doesn't mean that there, for example, I would look at number one, which is the resilience to the impacts of climate change, which includes, you know, the river falls underneath that as an action. It's ongoing. And number four, which is broadband, those two in and of themselves, if they stay on the priority list, to do them, they're manpower, they're manpower intensive for the town. Is that, would you give me that? I mean, I'm just trying to break them a little bit. We've talked about, for example, broadband and everyone is extremely committed to it or has been to date. But to go forward with it from where we are, as we discussed a few weeks ago in the select board meeting, it's going to take some level of work. And if we want to continue with these on the priority list, then we've got to be cautious. We can't be adding a heck of a lot more. The other ones, by the way, also development of affordable housing, that's also a heavy topic. None of these are easy. They're all, they all take a heck of a lot of work. But if you add up the time in my mind that he said it could take, it's not small. If, if, you know, the public safety thing, that, that's, that's a, that's a big banana also. Upgrading and key infrastructure, that's a big one. But I guess the best way to go, does anybody, select member feel that any of these? One, first of all, we should continue on with these priorities. And two, are we missing a priority of some kind? And again, the priorities are for setting the stage for future investigations as staff, which will result in action items at some point in time by the board and by the town. That's, that's kind of the change.
Bob, are the priorities listed one through seven in order of importance? Is that the general consensus? They're just on?
I don't think we're that specific.
Okay, I was just wondering, I mean, like, are we looking to redefine order or that sort of thing? And I noticed that on the document that Audrey wrote, it interchangeably uses in some regard priorities and goals, which I think, you know, goals are defined, assigned, measurable, followed up on all of those things, whereas priorities sometimes are not. And if we, if it is, if we're looking more for goals, we should do a better job diving into each one of these to do those things. Define it, assign it, measure it, follow up on it. What is achievement?
You sound like Bob, I remember a couple of years ago, Bob said, well, it was, the question was about goals or objectives or priorities. And we're using those, throwing them out. And he was like, no, you know, goals, objectives and objectives.
Well, I mean, I think we need to cover consensus because priorities can be more general. It's just a, it's a set of guidelines.
Yeah, that's true. But you're absolutely correct. I totally agree with that position. If you were looking at, for, it's a difficult amount of the air, if we want to decrease the town's carbon footprint.
It's a measurement.
Twenty-five percent. Twenty percent of the next two years, that would be a goal. I totally agree with that. I think broadband is the same thing. I, you know, I think that's, that's a huge, huge effort. And we just got to decide where we want to go first with it. And by when?
At the second, we said, we're not operational, follow through their annual work plans. We, we're not operational. So I think you're making a very, I think it should be the priorities at the select board. And then in each department head, their annual work plan, they have goals that are then resident or there's somebody on. And then have tasks and, and
Leading to actions.
Leading to actions. One of the, one of the things I struggle with in the priority workshop is I don't have any data that indicates me how much time does the staff spend on planning for and implementing project number one, two, three, five, you know? So it's really hard for me to say, do we remove one? Do we add one? Do we, is there one missing? Are we, and by the way, and also are we making progress on any of those seven? So I think we need to have a better tracking system.
Well, I think that should fall off the, out of this meeting, for example, on the truck in terms of taking one as a priority and task operations to come back with reasonably achievable goals that we could accomplish in whatever timeframe.
Well, I guess if we could start kind of at the most basic level, is everybody still in agreement that these seven are priorities?
That's what I'm trying to start with. Is there, is there a priority that we're, in one of us or all of us, a consensus of the board feels we're missing? From my perspective, I'll tell you right now, I don't think we're missing. I think there's things I could add to, but I don't, I think putting too much, anymore on the plate is just a little too much else.
Um, I think that, sort of building off of what Tom said, these are, they're very broad. And so I think what has happened in the past some is that we've said, oh, well, the select board says we want to increase affordable housing. And so town staff or the planning board or whoever said, well, I guess we'll do this. But then it's been something that has been like, eh, well, maybe not in that way. You know, there are different things that, and we waste a lot of time by choosing to work on things sometimes that not everybody can get behind. So I, I mean, in terms of broad things, of course, I want to decrease the town's renewable energy and energy conservation. Is there a meaningful goal that we could set that is going to accomplish that? Because if there isn't, I'd rather town staff work on different things. And those of us who care about that issue can lobby state government or where there's, wherever there's something meaningful that can be done. So I do think we need to attach some actual items to some of these, you know, expanding access to fast and affordable broadband. Well, yeah, that was, that was a goal or priority. And we created this whole thing. And then, you know, last meeting, we got an update that said, uh, it's not clear if there's any meaningful action or outcome for Camden that could come of this. So, you know, how much more staff time do we want to put into that right now or not? Or are we going to say, well, everybody hears a link to Starlink?
Both excellent, excellent points because to feed on that, the town's carbon footprint was reduced by going through a very comprehensive study of all of our buildings, all of our operations, it's town controls, but it's a Siemens project. And they've almost accomplished a hundred percent except the roof of this building. And that reduced like twenty-something percent of our carbon footprint. But beyond that, there was only some minor items they identified that could possibly go forward in phase two. It would not be any, it would not be even near the remains to the phase one loss in terms of production. So.
So we should monitor what, it would be nice to really have a report on what the results were of the all that.
Well, we can't until they finish the roof, you know, when they have everything done, then they'll do it, their annual audit will occur.
Yeah. And I mean, that's all part of the performance contract. But I guess, you know, to, to sort of the point everyone's making for things like, you know, reducing the, the town's carbon footprint, we had that as a goal. We had a big project that we have largely finished in service of that priority and goal. And now it's, you know, are we, are we going to, I don't want to say put it on the back burner, but maybe turn our attention to more things in the upcoming year? Because, you know, there's certainly other things we could do. We've talked about, you know, electric or EV car charging stations and, you know, the making the fleet into electric or hybrid vehicle, you know? So there's, there's always things that can be done, but it's just a question of, is that something that rises to the top of the list now? Or do we want to turn our attention to other things that are priorities and we have projects assigned to or?
And I think as the, by the way, originally, if you recall, the town's carbon footprint was at one point discusses the entire town, not just the town operations. And as a big, big difference in scope of those two, but the town, I agree with the town's operations part. I don't see the ability to have anything significant to.
Well, and I was just throwing that as an example, not a suggestion.
No, but I agree with it because like, we've been through the evaluation of all of our buildings, all of our operations. What the exception may be of some improvements that snowballed was very, very low left.
I mean, vehicles, I don't want this to be used as a, as a reason to just drop it and say, oh, well, Randy goes back to an SUV or, you know? But it's sort of like when there are, sometimes there are opportunities to move forward on something and sometimes there aren't. And a lot of the time, maybe if it's a question of whether to spend a significant amount of staff time on something, you, you might have to come or choose to come back to the select board to say, how much time should, this is taking a lot of time. We could do it or.
Right. And I guess that's the question, you know, is it something that you want us to look at opportunistically? You know, if it pops up and it's consistent with everything that, you know, everybody's agreed to? Or is it something you want us to more aggressively pursue?
Well, some things have, excuse me, what's it called? If something's happening opportunistically during the year, it's going to happen. When something comes up, like we're in the process of maybe buying an electric truck now, I don't have a public service. And that's going to require charges. Of course, we're going to do that. I mean, that's, that's, you know, that's just smart. This was set up to take a big bite out of the carbon footprint of town operations buildings. We've done that in my opinion.
My, my thought is maybe we should start by identifying what we think might be lacking on here. Rather than looking at the existing list, maybe we should think about, you know, brainstorm what we'd like to see added or emphasized. And then, and then maybe we'd say, well, this is more important than that, or those two go together.
You can do it a number of ways. As long as, we're going to, I would think that we shouldn't drop the number two carbon footprint and also the we just go, come back to it. They are, the second one, that's a huge effort.
So the two things I thought of, and I think it needs to be more emphasized on this list. If it's already on here, it needs to be emphasized more is safety, safety for citizens and citizen safety.
In what respect?
I, I just think that there should be a greater emphasis at the town. I mean, if you want to get specifically into operations, we can.
No, 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 no. When we say citizen safety, you're talking about.
In all regards, I mean.
Oh, I see. I get it.
More than number three?
Yeah, more emphasized than number three. I mean, you know, you can, you can just go to all of our police, fire services, the quality of them, sidewalks. I mean, we can, we, there's a great number of things that fall under the category of citizen safety.
Because we could admit that and now jump to the truth.
And then the other one.
Is kind of like that. I don't know. I think some of these should be explained a little bit more too. Like complete streets is, is all about making the roads sort of equal, equally prioritizing the safety and usability for bikes and pedestrians as well as cars. So that's like a thing, that's kind of where sidewalk safety.
We should prioritize safety of bikes and pedestrians over cars. It should be, not as well.
As a priority, but I, I think we're really discussing a little brown avenue that Tom was bringing up, which is there are other aspects of living in a town, in a home, that we can, we can pay attention to in terms of safety that could fall off of that priority.
Yep. I just think if the town has that as a point of emphasis, it helps the staff get guided in that direction. And the second one I thought of is quality of life. And it's not even, it's not addressed on here explicitly. But, you know, when you're talking about our kids, our seniors, parks, anything that's related to quality of life in Camden, I think that ought, that ought to be a priority.
Could that be, public access is something that I want to talk about at some point, you know?
That could be part of that.
That I've heard a lot of support from people that want.
There's lots of things could be part of that. Again, you know, access and egress and which we've had some issues with. There's a long list of things could be part of that.
Oh, I feel like public access to things like.
It's just that the problem with that is your definition, because the staff is going to be working on quality of life. We're talking about better, better heating system.
Well, you have subcategories under some of them.
True, true, true. True. But again, it's, it's, I don't, it's, I don't, to me, it's fine. But a lot of stuff falls in the.
Even broadband can fall under that category, although one thing that we're discussing on those is something specific like broadband, in my opinion, at some point, if, if the public avenue has sort of, seems like it's, that avenue is diminished, you know, there's, there's still private avenues to, you know, you can reach out to, I don't know, name your name and ask them to get better service to Camden, I would think.
I mean, usually I, you know, with something like that, they would want to partner with the town and have us throw money into the building. So I, yeah, I mean, but a lot of different things can be done, but it's just a matter of.
Some of that could fall under quality of life.
We can, we can just sub under, under what was going to agree with your public safety services. We could, and we could just add citizen services, and, and something, something. As again, there has to be some, something that can easily bite into the standard versus platitudes. Because I, I'm looking at and saying, well, what do you mean?
Or I guess like, here's a, here's another way we could do it. So I guess for like, you know, safety for citizens and quality of life, when we have, you know, when we look at sort of like our, you know, list of projects, stuff that we have underway, stuff that's forthcoming, you know, that sort of list at the bottom. You know, if we kind of go through that, just to, just so it's kind of clear in our minds as to, you know, what do you, what do you feel like falls under that? Or what do you feel like maybe doesn't? So that, you know, we have an idea of what kind of work or projects that we have keyed up would be consistent with that.
Are you asking me?
I mean, and anyone, any of you can throw out a sample.
Well, I, I think we need to do the same thing for, for instance, improving communication with the public. I mean, I, yeah.
All of these could use some better definition.
Well, we have, on the list, as I scanned the list, the ones that popped out of me were Miko's Internet Development Corporation, for example, that's one that if, you know, with this broadband issue, we've got to just decide whether or not we either have to spend time laying out the, of the alternatives that Camden has to accomplish that and quantify them for future decision or not. It's, it's rare crossroad. If we don't do anything with it, it's going to languish. And I just, we just want to be upfront with that. Everybody gets to know. And now I believe when the voters voted for MIDC, they presumed the town was going forward with something that by broadband fiber to the town, to the whole town. It's not happening at this point in time.
I mean, I, I do think we need, with that, we need to revisit a little bit how many residents are truly underserved. I'm a huge proponent of, you know, municipal utilities for all of the reasons that lots of other people are. But when you actually look at the data for Camden, I've had a hard time finding that we have a big broadband problem. There's, and then now with Starlink, that is providing really very good speeds to, to really anywhere. So quantifying a little bit more, whether it would be, make more sense to, you know, help a few people that might not be able to afford the access that is already available or it's just that I have seen a pretty dramatic improvement in some areas of Camden, even just in the last two years, I think partially because they, some of these companies were nervous that we're seriously talking about a municipal utility. And so they've, I mean, the speed at my house on Kinnick Street has tripled without me doing anything. But it was just, I'd like to hear, I have yet to hear from a Camden resident that says I, my lack of access to internet is really, I mean, maybe a couple, but a lot of the time it turns out to be the router or something, but I'm.
And we can also help with the, the assistance. I mean, because, because it's such an individual problem that we can help them through the.
You're right. You're not talking about doing fiber in the whole town. That's a whole different ballgame from, you know, the, what MIDC was contemplated to do. There may still be suppliers that may come in here and build a fiber network in, in Camden to some extent. They're talking about it smart and they, but they're just going to charge what they want to charge to residents for fiber. And that's, that's pretty common. That's what's happening in Rockland, consolidated.
Well, I mean, I would say if, if nobody sees it as sort of like a pressing issue now that needs to be like, you know, that's, I'd say townwide, then, you know, that's something that we can sort of work on as the need arises or on a, on like a project by project basis, instead of looking at it as, you know, a townwide issue.
It's so big as a townwide issue. It's, it's huge.
So if we put, say, expanding access to broadband under a quality of life header and, you know, and subcategories, we could look at it on a more of an individual basis for us versus more of a comprehensive, comprehensive basis.
Or if the opportunity arises, it's like, yeah, if the opportunity arises for us to help out a little extending fiber out to the snowbowl, then it just means that the public works crew has to, I don't know, dedicate half a day to something. If opportunities arise, then we should do it, but not like go out searching.
So yes, I, I agree with that. I think that what you said is right. The idea, the pretty new concept was fiber throughout the whole town by some municipal kind of thing. If we were going to do three MIDC, it's kind of stalled. And so pick it up is a huge effort for the town staff and or whoever has to investigate the options. That probably should be the move show.
Would we want to put affordable housing under quality life header as well?
I mean, can we put as long as there, I think the comprehensive plan is pretty clear on housing as being one of the top three issues, I believe it was a conflict. I think it should remain on there. Whether it becomes affordable housing or housing period is another issue, given the current market and economics and.
I think it's really an economic development issue, also because of the availability of people at work.
That's absolutely true. I think it's a, it's a regional economic issue.
But we do need to look at sort of what form that takes so that we're not surprised when, you know, zoning the types of, you know, that comes down to either supporting projects on town and property or supporting zoning changes that would facilitate it. And so, like to me, I don't personally want to see that take the form of suburban rural sprawl of turning every field into a seven-house subdivision. I would prefer it to take the form of more density in the downtown apartment buildings, God forbid. You know, something that can be meaningful, not just like, oh, a few little, you know, houses out on Sagamore Farm, for instance, but you know, something, if we really want to move the dial on that, it could be like a, you know, an actual apartment building with four or five stories. That's how they solve the problem of the places. But, but if we don't, I don't know if, you know, what everybody else thinks about that kind of thing. So it's.
But it's a great policy issue.
But we should talk about it at some point, like what types of changes are we comfortable promoting for what purpose?
I think you're talking more surgery. I agree with you. You just can't, I mean, Sagamore Farm is seventy acres is a, I just look at it as a huge development opportunity, but that's, but it's not easy. It's a tough one. I was talking to Tom earlier about it. It's laced with issues with zoning, but, but when you go change that zone, which coastal residential, you change everything up to room one court. Because that's all coastal residential. So it, I agree with it.
Which we did. And now Sherman's Cove could be like subdivisions everywhere.
Are you suggesting maybe a housing more downtown-ish kind of an approach on increasing housing availability?
I mean, what I would like to see is something like a four-story apartment building at the public works garage and around the Methodist Church area where there's actually, when you've actually added something meaningful that could house a bunch of people and but rather than saying, well, we changed the zoning out of Melvin Heights Road and now you can have, you know, two $500,000 houses rather than one out in Leonard's Field. That to me isn't, that's bad.
I agree. To my opinion, we have some options when you mentioned about, well, a little higher density housing for individuals, that's increasing housing. It doesn't, the word affordability throws me off sometimes, but I'm not sure what that affordability is these days, to be honest with you. But I think to increase housing, affordability has, affordable housing has a moniker on it for, you know, certain percentage of AGI and all this kind of stuff. But I, I, I think the.
I, I think, I think if we, if we stick to workforce, workforce housing, which is, I mean, affordable, it, it depends on the town ordinance, right? Because, because, right, because if you look in New York City, affordable housing. Right. Cause if you look in New York City, affordable housing is, it's completely different than what we would have in Camden. Or San Francisco, right? So. I mean, the goal, the goal is to have people who can work and live in Camden, right?
In all types of.
In all types of trades, yeah.
It reduces back to the complaint. We do, we can't ignore the complaint. And that's, it's written, it's been proven by others. One of the top three things in it is housing. It's really simple. What housing should be.
Affordable housing. It's not. Camden generally don't want to just increase housing. It's like, oh, I'd like more houses just on.
People can find a place to live that has one, two, or three bedrooms in it for them and their kids or. Maybe it's, maybe it's, wherever, probably near the corner of town.
I don't know. I mean. I think rental housing is a really big problem. That's what people really. That nobody can find anybody to work here. It's not, and when people come back after college, it's like impossible to find anywhere to live in Camden. We need that sort of transition housing where it's like, you don't have to commit to a mortgage, but you can.
Yeah, I told, that when you talked about housing, that's what I was envisioning. Was rental housing in a three or four story building that has a number of units where people can live.
Right.
One place to go between workforce housing is a good way.
So housing stays on the list.
Yes.
But before zoning changes come, where the planning boards spends a bunch of time on something. I feel like we should have more of a conversation with a range of options that we, you know, these are the types of things we could do.
We need a policy.
Not just.
I guess there, there are a couple things in process. So since we're talking about it now, we might as well. Talk about those specific things to just get an idea if that's, everybody agrees it's a good area of focus. So. You know, we have close to half a million dollars in ARPA funds. And when we discussed that with the budget committee, we talked about the John Street project. So it's. Putting sewer in there because there's a large section of John Street that doesn't have any connectivity to the sewer. Drainage is a problem on that street and also, um, there's no sidewalk there. So just trying to make that area, like the, the public infrastructure on it suitable for. Higher density development and the town also owns a block of land that potentially could be. Used to do some sort of project there. So that was sort of the idea with John Street. And, you know, at the time, the select board was also supportive of it, but. It's a new board, so it's just figuring out, or do we want to keep charting that course with John Street? So that's one thing. And another thing, the planning board has sort of picked up the short term rental issue. And so that, and they're approaching it from a housing affordability perspective. So I think those are kind of the two. You know, things that are currently kind of, you know, on the, on the back burner, but could be.
And we also. And we need to implement the short term rental registration process, right? Because the voters. Were yes on that, so we need to, we need to deliver on that and we still haven't done.
That's just people registering.
Yeah, but there's no process.
The first step.
Yeah.
Wantification.
Right.
There is, and we are, we are permitting those every week now.
But before they said they determined it was unenforceable and then was. Which was frustrating, but it doesn't make.
I guess I would add a third on draft, and that would be L D, um, twenty oh three that got passed by the legislature last year. Um, that for the most part jams a bunch of housing, um. Requirements down on municipalities. Um, we'll see if that gets changed, but. Um, it mandates that municipalities increase density. Um, across the board in their community. There's a whole host of things that we're going to have to put into our zoning ordinance that came down from the state. Um, that addresses housing. I can share, um, some of that L D two, two thousand three. Planning board, like Dr. said, they have been looking at short term rentals primarily from a housing availability. And affordability, um, perspective. They've spent a lot of time looking at, um, four or five different communities. And they would like to have a workshop with you guys because they don't want to go down some route that. We want to do that at some point.
And then we should talk about, I mean, it's going to come up, so we might as well talk about what, whether we want to put energy into Sagamore Farm or not.
That's, that's, uh. Oh, I agree. No, I agree. I, it frustrates me that it's not on the list, but I understand what a load it is to attack it, but it's a huge asset.
I'm not necessarily.
I think we have a couple of huge issues that the board's focused on right now that we need.
That's one of the reasons. That's one of the reasons why I stayed with that show, because it, it is, um, it's just a big. Uh, it's a big, it's a, it's a huge effort.
If we put, um, affordable housing of any sort, wherever, will the town be the landlord?
I, I would. I would try very hard to make sure that anything we set up, that wasn't, that wasn't how it worked. Cause there's, I think there's a lot more. I think, I think there's a lot of entities operating in this area that would be much better.
Because also, also fees are more global financial issue. And that is to me, and I've mentioned to a number of you, a number of times we talked about it. We're, we're, we're in a time period where the strain on citizenry for. Well, everything from property taxes to inflation to, uh, is, is high. It's in, wait till this winter, it's going to be huge. Um, and, and I think when you think about something like housing and town administering. You're increasing the cost of the town. Every, every chance we get, we should be. But every, every chance we have, we need to be. Reducing, reducing costs and increase whenever possible, of course, without reducing services. But that's, that's essential. That's why, that's one of the reasons why I'm, when they won't, only when they actually. I was, this is the Parkin study that we're doing and, and testing it to land in it. That is potential, whether it's accepted or not by the citizenry or increasing revenue to the town. And it reduces that impact of the world we live in today financially. But that's, I, you tickled my thought when you said that about Sweden, that we got, we've got to stay out of it. But I think the housing thing is clear. I think Sagamore probably needs to be on the back burner. I'd say it, and I don't believe I'm saying it, but I think we have to.
So with Sagamore though, I don't know how much the two of you have, um, received comments from. Uh, from the community on this, but in, in fairness, you should probably expect that. That that will happen. And so, um, last year, one of the things. Um, that was frustrating to some people was that when we talked about it in our select board workshop like this. We kind of did the same thing a little bit. We're like, well, we have a lot more going on than. We can necessarily handle and we need to put that on the back burner. Whereas a few years back. We had said, um, I think all coming in super ambitious, like, oh, we've got the tannery, we've got Sagamore Farm, and oh, the possibilities. We had put it on as a priority. And so we did send out a request for proposals. Um, and or request for expressions of interest, exactly, yeah. And we got a couple. And, um, one entity in particular, um. Uh, actually took the time and spent their own money, um, doing a Vernal Pool. Study because that was something that had been, um, identified as a concern. And so I think, you know, I know they certainly got their hopes up about it and. Um, members of the Energy and Sustainability Committee that was meeting at the time were really. Um, excited. That was, it was called Midcoast Co-Housing. Um, it's all on the website. Another proposal we received was from, um. Real heat resources. And, you know, there were good quality proposals that people had put some energy into. And so there was frustration. When we said, oh, we just don't have time, but didn't necessarily give. Um, you know, really get back to them. So I think we should probably like close the. Loop a little bit and, you know, maybe even if the. The, everybody were to read at some point and view the proposals that we did receive, just so that it's. We can feel that, um, or say with a straight face that when we're saying that it has to be on the back burner, it's done with, you know, all of the information. Um, I, with Sagamore, I spent a bunch of time walking out there the other day. Again, and I've talked to the Midcoast Co-Housing people too, and I think it could be. Great what they're proposing. Um, I think that when I look back at all the old studies that have been done about Sagamore, um. They had identified the area where the solar panels are currently.
Right.
As an area that was like, sort of almost like ready for development. It's flat. It's a bunch of, um. Uh, when they did the Route One project years ago, they brought in a bunch of fill and so it's like flat and. It, um, doesn't have all these complicated wetland issues. It has some access issues, but. They had said at the time that that would be a reasonable place to try to have additional development. But I do think the rest of it is a bit of a can of worms right now and that. A lot of people that look at it on the map don't realize that, like the stormwater issues there and it, it's already eroding one of the neighbors' properties significantly. It's go, that goes down into Sherman's Cove. It's.
Well, the question is, do we want Sagamore Farm to be on a priority list, a part of it or not?
I just wanted them to know that it was going to, you're likely to get, but, you know.
Unfortunately.
Yeah, it's a, it's a big project. They, you know, um, anybody who's going to do anything out there, it's a, it's, it's a partnership with the town. It's not just a. Take it and do a project there.
Is there more, um? Is there, what happened to the Knox, Knox County ARPA funds? What was the final allocation? Do we know if it's?
Yeah.
And is there more like state or federal funds coming for affordable housing? Cause that to me would be one reason to put it back on the list. Is if there, there's.
I mean, there's more. There's more funding available, like, um, the Community Development Block Grant Program. That was sort of the. You know, the go to whenever a municipality had a housing project.
Right.
You know, whether it was a, you know, private or not for profit housing developer that wanted to do a project of the municipality itself. All that money has to flow through either a city or a town. And, you know, there's more money available, um, you know, given all the sort of recent. You know, federal.
Federal.
Injection of funds into stuff like that. But it's. It, it's a huge commitment for the town to get involved in that because we're the ones actually applying for those grants and then administering the funds.
That'd be chairman's house.
Yeah.
Yes.
So back to, um. Closing on, uh. Just. If, when, when we resolve in terms of the, uh, of the carbon footprint issue, is it on or is it not?
It's a tier two, let me say.
It's what?
Tier two.
Two, two. Let's do two.
It's a one to be opportunistic.
Opportunistic. So tier one is priority and tier two is opportunistic, right?
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't even know. We have a different list, I'm sure. I, I think putting it on here suggests we have as a higher priority, I'm suggesting it's not. As far as the town operation.
I, I think we could consolidate one and two. I mean. I think we all agree that, you know. We're looking for anti pollution efforts for the town. We're looking for resiliency efforts for the town.
That should be in every project. That should be in everything we do. This is almost like cross, cross cutting issues like.
That's words, so one and two are consolidated somewhere.
I agree.
And then in terms of, um, three, we were talking about proving the delivery of, let me go say, public services with subsets. Subbullets that say, um, public safety, um, um, broadband.
No, broadband, I was thinking more quality of life, uh, safety and, but I, I see what you're saying. Public services.
Yeah, I just, it's, it's public services. I'm saying broadband, it can be, uh, public safety. Um, all the, all the bullets we were talking about previously.
I, I, I think the emphasis on citizen safety should be a priority. I mean, it, these are very, very broad. And citizen safety should be one that every municipality has.
Semantically, I don't know the difference between public safety and citizen safety.
Yeah, I don't care what it's called.
That's why I was just calling it public safety. To, but you can call it citizen if you prefer that word.
I do.
But I think it should be.
Be slashed.
Okay, public side, citizen safety, um.
Right. Public safety seems, it's so, um, associated with an item in our budget, you know, it's, it's everything in the public safety building.
That's true.
Which is fire and police, which. You know, for our purposes, I think that can be interpreted as just a.
Call it public slash citizen safety.
Do we want to talk about some examples of that or so that?
Um, yeah, yeah, um, I'm trying to try to get the list right first. I think broadband can be on there because we can try to help. It's political citizens in public.
I was, do we want the quality of life? Cause if we're going to go for a quality life, which could include.
You mean as a separate item?
Correct. Then that, that would include better access to broadband. It could include affordable housing. It could include, um, you know, safety is pedestrian and bikes, but it also is quality life. And I talked about, you know, our, our, um, our, our children, our seniors. Um, again, when we're talking about broad things that the board wants to recognize that the, the staff does. These are the people that we want to take care of first, right? I mean, or, you know. Specifically identified as important.
As long as, as long as those items are on the list, I don't really care how you, what, you know, address it. If you want to be a separate item and stuff. Anybody else have an opinion whether it should be separate or not?
I just want to make sure that it's. Under, that. Because it's town staff are going to be taking this as sort of like a, you know, broad direction about, okay, I'm going to work on this or I'm going to work on this. And I want to make sure that there's something actionable or that comes. Out of that so that, you know, quality of life, well, quality of life for who? Is that so that it's quieter on Baby Street for the, or is that so that, you know, more people, you know, the majority of residents have. Access to recreational activities or I, I just want to.
I mean, if you're going to ask to define quality of life, I would define it as, yeah, uh, 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 uh. An area that we can walk and bike, um, an area that has lots of green space. An area that has good access to, to. Opportu, job opportunities, good access to, uh, technology. Um, recreational activities.
I'm just thinking some people are going to interpret that as quality of life is being able to pull up with the truck to. Park in the same parking spot, but for another person, it might be.
All of these have some ambiguity at the end, some. For interpretation.
Yeah, it can. I always wish I would say.
I think it can be a broad category with things. I mean, that's where I would want to see like public access that we should be. You know, that to me is under quality of life. It's like, you know, making sure that we're. To making the most use of our, of our town owned properties. Even the public bathroom open twenty four hours, even though we have some problems with it is an important.
Yeah.
One to me, like, you know, making sure that our existing public spaces are.
I guess the term of life does get it, right? But I, it, it, you know, some people's quality of life is I hope I can afford to pay the rent next week. You know, and, and it, it varies by person, is my point. And to your point, it's too noisy here. You know, you know, that kind of, or the, uh, or all the things we hear every year about.
Or tents.
Like I hear, this is, you know, the kids on the public landing being loud are impacting my quality of life.
Right.
It's just, you know, a statement that I've heard that I, that I don't want to.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I just want to be clear if, all of you kind of agree. Cause I think that we're kind of opening ourselves up for people saying that we're not, um, fulfilling the goal of quality of life. When we do certain things, um.
Yeah.
The skate park being a good example.
Or the staging at Tannery Park.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of examples of things where I think that, you know, for some people, they would see it as contrary to the quality of life. When we're just trying to do things like projects or initiatives that.
That's why.
For some people. So I think that. Having some specificity around that one is going to be pretty.
That's why I agree. That's why I come back to the public services thing. That's what the town does. We provide services to the citizenry. And we can get quality, I guess the word quality of life, I think, is a significant.
I, I agree. There's some ambiguity there, but I think anything.
I mean, I think it's okay to use it as long as you're all in agreement as to what, what initiatives are we focusing on in service of that.
That's what I was trying to list. And I, when I heard those things like, you know, broadband, I've heard, um, you know, um. Sidewalks have to go here.
Yeah.
I think so. I think it's a.
Well, that's, but that's part of, um. That's really part of the big streets, isn't it?
Some, there's always some crossover.
But I think, um, those things should be listed on the quality, like it was not. Uh, some of the stuff we've thrown out there that cannot find the sky.
That's, but parks, recreational activities.
No, well, we gotta be careful of that because, you know, we want to stick with a comprehensive plan. And that's what we're, that's one of our objectives, so, um.
But the town provides parks. The town provides recreational activities.
We do.
Yeah, so that's.
Whatever, whatever.
We want to take care of the, I mean, take care of those parks or improve them or.
Right. Well, we have twenty, which. We have a list of, I think, twenty parks. We have a list of twenty parks, and I gotta tell you, every one of them needs work, every one of them.
And they probably always will need work.
Exactly, exactly, it's just that it's definitely, it costs money, of course, to do that, and we need to, we need to spend it, don't get me wrong, but it just needs to be done. We haven't, we haven't. Parks has been a great job, we're trying to make it, that's a huge list, but yeah, but that's fine.
Can the public speak to any of these?
Um, this is a select board.
It's a time to workshop it, so.
No, it's open to the public, but not for participation, because this is for us to to resolve something that we, it's not a time meeting. Otherwise, we'd have people here from various other boxes, like they wanna pitch in to us, so I I get your point, but no. Um, so. So to to value life would be, you know, uh.
What about, let's talk about seniors, I mean, what what are we doing for seniors here in town?
Well, isn't, isn't.
One of the big things, but what we talked about before with John Street is, there's that um, what's it called, Mary Gardens.
Yes.
The assisted living facility, it's not even quite an assisted living facility, but so many of those people, they're just trying to get to Hannaford. And it makes like, and you see people back, you know, on with wheelchairs trying to get through the middle of the road. Just makes all the difference for their quality of life if they can get to, you know, to Hannaford and things like that. Um, I do think it's a really big.
We do provide like a lot of trust fund support to like senior spectrum and Camden, um, what is it called, Camden area senior citizens.
I mean, so we define that and it becomes a priority for the staff to support those organizations, even if it's just supporting organizations to support seniors.
Yeah, I think the sidewalk stuff will take part of that too.
Yeah, or kids, supporting organizations that support kids, the same.
Well, what do you, but what do you define as support? So what do you define as support? Because, because for me, the if there's, if there are organizations that take care of those things, they take care of seniors or kids or whatever. There's not really a call to use staff time to support them.
My definition is.
We can't. I mean, if we start supporting other organizations, we're turning the town into. A a a very different organization. And and then, you you know, how come Jeremy is not helping Pauls? I I mean, where do we start? So it's, I think it's a very slippery slope to say support organization, what it includes staff time.
I I hear what you're saying, um, let's take a specific example, um. If the YMCA director called you and asked, can we use a town facility? Um, and Audra looks at this and says, you know what, the select board has said that uh they'd like the town to. Support organizations in in that regard, you know, it's a, it's a children's activity that the YMCA wants to put on. It. It there's, you know, it's it's unwritten that we probably do, but I I don't know, it's just.
I think, as long as it's clear to Audra, is what we're asking in terms of the priority, but the definition is. Because what, I agree with you, the just the staff shouldn't be looking at this thing, they gotta go running out to find out what agencies we can help to do something for seniors, not.
We we already have a lot of organizations that call the town, say, can we, can we have the truck go and help us do flower delivery?
And what?
Can we, but but it takes, it takes enormous, I mean, that's one of the metrics I would love to have in my hand. How much staff time is spent on discrete project that they get called for? And they've they've, they feel that they have to do it.
I agree with you.
And and at the end, we come to the end of the fiscal year and we looked at the projects and the priorities we set. And we're all, we're behind on everything because staff time has been diverted for a very valuable cause, no issue with that. But but then we, town business is not done, so I think we have to be very cautious when we say we wanna help organizations.
I agree with you, it's happening informally though, right?
Exactly.
And sometimes we wanna say what we don't wanna spend a bunch of staff.
Exactly.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I'd say that for um, a lot of what you're talking about, Tom, we've got pretty good. Other systems in place to help out with that, like the trust fund committee, you know, we.
Yeah.
Give a lot of money to organizations that help seniors, help children, things like that.
We're trying to get the Y, unfortunately, the Y didn't even apply for um, with the the teen center, well, also the teen center was just a really big. Hit, and so, you know, we've talked a little bit about how could we try to get the word out? So they were asking for money, every year we were supporting the teen center and then then the fun thing just wasn't asked for, it closed down for COVID. Um.
But I guess, you know, that there are other times when we're asked by an organization for money or use of town property. Or whatever the case may be, and I, you know, in a lot of those instances, we do have like a good, you know, with the um. Homeless Coalition wanted to use the green for fundraiser, you know, we had a process to to get them to do that. And I think that, you know, if there's anything big that comes up, like, you know, for example, the YMCA, I think that part of their strategic planning. They're kind of thinking about how they can, you know, sort of reorient their relationship with the communities in regards to things like the teen center. And I think that's gonna be a much bigger sort of conversation with them. You know, that's, that's the sort of thing where I think it's gonna have to come back to the select board to make some decisions, so. You know, and there are certain things where, you know, we can do our best to set up priorities and, you know, we can have a really good understanding of the sorts of things. That you would like us to pursue if the opportunity arises, but, you know, there are always going to be things that we can't anticipate. And things that we just need to come back to the select board to weigh in on.
Well, take care.
I think, I mean, to me, the the key thing is, there's a cer- certain number of issues that only the town can deal with. Infrastructure, you know, traffic, parking.
Well.
Uh, and those things you need to focus on, there, we have a lot of organizations who provide social service that are super good. But we should not duplicate with them, we should, whenever there's a need that arises, and order is really good at that, and the town's really good at that. But my worry is that if we start, you know, putting the emphasis on that, then when are we completing the streets? When are we to, you know, dealing with the INI, when are we, there's a lot of things that only the town can do. And we cannot, there's no substitute for for our role, so we have to be mindful of using the staff time to do the things that the town. Is structured and to do, and when we can help other social, social organizations, we'll do, we do it anyway. But to me, I it it's not a priority for me.
There's, there's a lot, if you remember, day to, Nadia can tell you about anybody, day to day. Uh, uh, hand grenades get to pin this code, this is what we didn't anticipate, and that's something we still have to lower on the staff time, I don't. I don't wanna deal with half the emails Audrey gets when some of the hand grenades get thrown in the transit, and that's not, can't be included here. This is just, um, enough to be able to cover all of the issues, but the major ones, I think, I'm still on hearing is. Um, item one, uh, which is the climate change thing, we're not su- suggesting that remains, um, item two. Um, fundamentally, uh, goes away. Um, number three becomes a um, uh, uh, improving. Uh, uh, public services subset, I'm sorry, including, yeah, public services. With a subset of public slash slash citizen, uh, safety, broadband, um, what am I missing?
With, under that, I guess with public safety and citizen safety and all of, I would like to find. A a better way of getting citizen input on the things that are important and the things that people are. Thinking about, maybe this goes partially also with improving communication with the public, but giving people the opportunity to sort of have. You know, broad conversations and not just have to show up at a, at a select board meeting where there's something on the agenda and it's a public hearing and. But be able to sit down and and like a kind of casual, more type of workshop, like just a time to ask questions about, you know. When is it appropriate to call the police or which number should I call for a non emergency thing? Or I'm concerned about, you know, in general, this kind of an issue in town and. I just feel like we don't have a great way of like talking about.
We'll make, we'll make a rule of seven for that.
Yes, you could say that, like, you know, I'm concerned about all the boats I see on the lake.
Improving communication with the public should have a couple of subsets, one would be. Play the physical communication, how we tell citizens about what, whether it's by email or we do. And the other one can be certainly a, a public information sessions is another book, that's. Well, you can call it if you want, but it's a public information session, session, where you, where public can sit down and ask questions about. When developers, when the whole party department, whatever, whatever you want.
This, that number seven more than any um, should be defined, assigned, measured, assessed.
Well, it should, it's, it's very true, in this, in this day and age, we're. And Nadia can tell you again, it's communicating with the public, newspapers don't work, Facebook alone doesn't work, you know, uh, meetings don't work. In a way, it's, it's, it's a real challenge.
Well, we should identify what it is that we want the town to do, we want to give a written newsletter every month. Or we want a, a town email list that gets sent to, or we want.
Yep.
The minutes of the select board published and put on the bulletin board, I don't know.
The board should be asking for recommendations from town staffs to which of those options is most effective and they're paying, we wanna try and start now.
We should, we should add also in that number seven, since we're on the topic, um. I'm looking at you, I think we have the same pet peeve of simplifying the the different forms we have. At town and and making those processes online as much as we can.
Oh, it's crazy, you know, yes.
It would simplify, it would streamline so much of our work to have it. And I'm not sure it's a, it's a board priority or.
I I mean, I do, I've talked with Bob about this, but I I think our whole, the way we license businesses. We need to streamline it and simplify it and it's gonna be a huge investment, not a huge, it's gonna be an upfront investment of time to fix that. Because a lot of it is, you know, down to the crazy four page applications to renew your vitulars license. That's all set out in the ordinance, so. You know, all the types of questions that people are asked, so I think that, you know, if we spend some time trying to streamline it. So it's a really simple business licensing process, it's a one page form to renew it. On a yearly basis or bi yearly or however we wanna do it, I just think it could be a lot easier and it would be better administratively for staff. It would be better administratively for the businesses in town.
It it also plays a thing that I got earlier, where if you improve the efficiency of processes, you would eventually reduce the costs.
Yeah.
Expenses of those things, because town staff doesn't have to spend as much time.
Oh, and and the businesses too, I mean, it's not, it's not a very um, business friendly thing that we're doing by having this long process.
Those are good subsets to item seven, but back to, uh, uh, we were talking about public services, we had, I think, three bullets there. Um.
I'm not sure we shouldn't just take the broadband off it, I think at this.
Yeah, we should, we 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 keep it as an opportunity, but broadband at this stage is not a priority.
It's not a talent thing, it's a, it's a private sector.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I don't, I'm not saying I wanna withdraw all of our support or I I wouldn't wanna, like, are taking. It off to be, like, I feel like there might be something I'm not thinking about here that just, but I don't want.
Doesn't mean the town staff won't address it if it comes up, it just means it's not.
We're not gonna be active. Some sort of, yeah.
Push it in our face in a meeting, when she says, well, you said.
I won't be out there like trying to figure out a wire up the entire town or anything like that.
Well, but it says expanding, expanding access to, that should, that verb should be changed. That's what I'm suggesting, or take it off.
Take it off.
Take it off.
I just don't want staff time to be a bunch of, like, lots of staff time.
Well, what's gonna happen, somebody's gonna come in this time very quickly, in my opinion, and start building out or try to build out, and it's gonna force us to. Address it and think about it more, that's what's probably gonna be the trigger. The the dynamics of this area is like Rockland has consolidated, um, Rockport is somebody else I've heard now. It's gonna be coming, it's coming in and building out the rest of their world, in- independently, like Spectrum kinda has here in Camden. So it's good, it's gonna, it's gonna live, living in others.
We do need to make sure that we go, circle back and finish it, at least a bare bones road opening ordinance, um, to.
Right.
Limit what, because we have all these, everybody from the water company to, there was that possibility of natural gas coming in. And we don't have a very strong ordinance that dictates what can be done in our roads and how they.
Like the standard of, you know, what it's.
Right, that's, we end up with sinkholes all over the place and.
Yeah.
So broadband is. Taking that off, creating opportunities for, for housing workforce, as we have it called. Um, redeveloping and upgrading key infrastructure, police streets through more public open space, maintenance, truly what that is. Um.
What does public open space mean? That mean you?
Okay, town lending.
Well, cause open space is also a zoning term that, yeah. At the sub subdivisions with the.
To me, that's, that's what I thought, man.
That's what I did too.
You, uh, you, efficient utilization of public open space is really right.
Efficient?
Well, yeah, it it's efficient, it's just don't sit there, let's sit there and languish.
Well, but some.
Well, I mean, I I also think things like, um, you know, pathways and trying to, um. You know, get the riverwalk, develop, or some of the other trail systems that they've been working on over the years, I think that falls into that. Category as well.
It is, it is a huge maintenance issue involved here, that we can't be just fully to focus on, that's why.
We wanna, just the word open space, just as a little bit, some of them are forested.
Yeah, public spaces, I mean, we have plenty of public spaces.
Yes.
Or access to them, sign them, I mean, I have my pet things about all these public access points that nobody knows about.
Yeah, I mean, I would say that that's a, that's a.
That would be a priority, I mean, if we could, if we could.
Well, I mean, I think we can, I think it can stay as that, but I think.
Town owned property.
Kind of like, you know, narrowing down to what exactly do you want us to focus on?
Well, this here access.
We have a lot of parks, we have a lot of, you know, easements, we've got a lot of other pieces of public open space and. What, what's the focus? What do you want, like, what's the deficit? What do you want us to?
Access, I think is the biggest one, not so much making sure that the, you know, rose bushes are perfectly. Turned everywhere, which I know is some, very important in some places, but.
In Sherman Cove, having those public access points being mapped and, because we've been talking about it for a year.
It's all part of it.
Yeah.
I agree.
But focusing on on access.
Okay, improving communication.
And I guess, can we get back to access specifically with access, do you mean like access to the harbor? Or access to, like, what are, what are we trying to?
Well, there were some, so we voted on, we actually had a select board meeting where we voted.
Yeah.
To allocate up to twenty thousand dollars to follow up on the recommendations from the Harbor Access Study of nineteen eighty four.
Yeah.
Um, and only this eighty seven, but they had some very clearly defined things of places that needed to be surveyed. A lot of the time, the town has not proactively gone out and defined boundaries of our public access. Areas, but the private property owners have approached or done surveys that are. You know, beneficial to them, and then we always end up just taking whatever their survey says, we never sort of fight for. Um, and there, there are some areas where we don't have to fight at all, but just mark, following up on that, what we voted for before.
I agree. Finish, let's finish this thing.
Where is that money? Is it just waiting for us to? Hire somebody to put up signs and.
No, it needs to be searched.
Some of it's surveying.
It's a more legal, because there, to Alex's point, that, that there have been places where. Ticket fences, no thing to put up by, in with the residents, because that's my area, it's really.
I, but just to give you an example, and this is another thing that it, it's. You know, we really need to know that this is a priority for the entire board, because, for example. The meeting that that was discussed and money was appropriated, the next day I got, you know, letters from homeowners associations. And attorneys saying, well, if you're going to do this, then you need to keep in mind that it, you know. Just all like very, the private property owners who are very organized and willing to fight for every inch. So they'll start saying that, you know, they heard kids down there and it's been. And if you're going to open this up to the public, you need to maintain it better and you need to do this and that, so I mean, we, we just need to. As a group, you need to be unified because it means that we're.
I think the primary objective in my mind is that we just let every homeowner know. When they're approaching on public property, not make a statement, or then we just leave it at this point, they wanna fight it, they wanna fight it, fight it. They, I mean, we're not gonna go defending it, cause what's the purpose? And I, I guess we should.
Well, if you don't defend it, then you're not gonna get public access.
Access, yeah.
That's true.
So you're marking it, a lot of this, a lot of these things, we back off to the point where we don't even mark. Where the public access points are, because then it's. where the public access points are, because then it, it naturally causes people to go there. And then the, the adjacent property owners, you know, they, they get annoyed about things and so that's where, I mean, if we can't commit to at least marking all of the public access points. Um.
We've budgeted it, it's been
And in some places, there are like on, like bay, um, the Curtis Island lookout.
Yeah.
On, um, that's, you know, they have the little like Curtis Island lookout, but it's like green and gold lettering with wood that's barely visible and it doesn't make it clear that it's a public
Access.
Place.
So the residents put that up, you, you, I'll tell you the story, I'll, you know, it's, it's, it's because we didn't market that the residents put it up, so, so people would stop walking into their yards, looking for the lighthouse.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, so, so we need to do it.
And that's an eighty-foot right away there, for example, that one, eighty feet, that's like a park right there, but we have this little, like
So what, what, what would happen if we said this is an emphasis for the select board? How would you take this to the staff? You would assign it to someone? You'd say, Beth, go mark our parks?
Yep, go mark out the access points and, you know, um, clear out brush from an area that's overgrown and people can't get to, you know, we need to build stairs down to this area, so let's do like a little bit of engineering to figure out how we get
Then what happens? Do we get sued?
For what?
For by the homeowners association that everybody's already told me about.
I think, you know, most of the time, I mean, it's
All I'm saying is, is like
That wouldn't do it. What would happen is if we found our public access, if our public, we believe our public, somebody's fence was on our public property. That's when you get this exception.
There's a boundary, they're basically boundary disputes.
Not all of them, some of them are very clear, we know, like, farmer road.
I just wanna talk about what, why we're not doing it, because are we gonna get sued or is Randy not gonna be able to enforce kids making noise at night? Or, like, what is, yeah.
So, but it's not just complaints, sometimes it's, okay, well, if you're gonna, if you're gonna encourage the public to get down here, it needs, you need to make sure it's ADA, you need to have stairs here, you need to have this here, you need to have that.
What if we take them one at a time? We, we, we pu- put the signage up everywhere and then we try to improve them one at a time, live, given that we have limited staff?
Yeah, I mean, and we can, we can do all this, it's just a matter of
Is it a priority or is it just opportunistic?
Right, so, so we voted on this to meet another, it's, it's, it's a priority, because At least the disturbing work, exactly. I mean, to me also, if we start voting on things at the select board and then there's no follow-on, that, then that creates another
If it was already voted on, then it should already be on
Exactly.
You, you're gonna have some problems with the public, right? They should, and they should be, have a right to be upset with us if we vote on something.
We vote on something and then, yeah. But, but, so I think that's
Again, there, there are times too where like that, I, that was pretty piled on at a time where we didn't really have that time to do it, yeah.
So, we could just like advisory say, can we get on?
Right, yeah, I mean, I mean, it doesn't not Yeah, that's, I mean, that's why we're having this sort of
But it's also, I think, I think it's also bearing in mind that, that, that there are other places where the public access is not, that we have issues with that. So, it's this year, let's make sure we can finish, uh, at least on the, on those access points in Sherman Cove that we know exists, that we know have an issue, but for me, it's really
I agree, we, we did vote upon, so it doesn't need to be discussed.
But it's all, always keeping in mind, you know, public good, public access, how can we improve?
I just don't think that it's part of a priority.
Yeah.
If it's already been voted on. Well, the last time it was said, so we did vote on it, but then, um, then it was mentioned to me that, well, it wasn't, I just said, why are we getting on this? And it wasn't on our priorities list from
Yeah, exactly.
Earlier, because we, sometimes we do get excited about things, we get that something has gone down, and it's a compelling case, the, the, we read these recommendations from nineteen ninety-four and it's very hard to say that no to it, but then when you turn it into actually, well, what's the staff gonna do? Um, I do think the recommendations in this document though, from, it was nineteen ninety-four, I was wrong. But, which was a follow-up from a nineteen eighty-seven thing, they did identify somebody who had already done a lot of survey work in these areas who would be appropriate to hire, um, to follow up for the town, and if we could just maybe do that, um, that's why we assigned money to it too, so that
I, I agree with you, it's, it's, should all have already been
Execute the budget.
Execute the budget, okay. So it's four, four twenty.
I know, we got a couple minutes, one other, I, you mentioned, I have to close on before we craft this and send it out for comment. Um, is, do we, do we wanna do anything regarding to, to getting input about what ordinance needs to be attacked in this specific year?
On the harbor.
And we had, we had a few, do you wanna develop a list for us to review or? I mean, I, I'm done, I can't see her and say, I know there's a couple we've mentioned, that we would wanna, you know, the closing scripts and that kind of thing. But is there anything else that's lurking? We should, we should have a definitive list.
Yeah, I can, I can get a list of ordinance amendments for the upcoming year.
And that, I'm not sure that has something in prayer, this is something we should be doing every year anyway.
We should do it every year.
Well, yeah, yeah, lots of ordinances need work. Um, I can name a bunch of, but I think you start on a list and then we can all comment on anything we said. Should, you may know, I know one or two, that may, maybe you all may wanna consider during the year. Well, that, I think it's time to have more ice tea, Tom.
Should we do a continuation of this at some point or?
I think a revisit, I think a revisit, I mean, uh, we, we, we kinda did that in the past when, into the spring, when we talked about where we are officially with budget time.
But maybe if, um, you know, at some point, we develop a way or we encourage Audra to come to us when there, you know, things popping up, that it's not clear whether they fall in the priorities
Yeah.
or not, so that, um, what I don't wanna see is this, you know, one meeting that we have here used as a as a, as a weapon to, and then, well, we didn't, no, didn't define it then, so it's you know, just figuring out how to deal with the fact that
There's two, two things that can happen there. One, stuff that falls out over the transit, and Audrey has brought that stuff to it, to us during select board meetings, just, just so you know.
Yeah.
This is, you know, this is what's happening, we didn't anticipate it, has nothing to do with priority, that's one issue, it's a correct, the other one is when, I don't, I don't think it has, there are things that have happened every year that I've been on the board that had nothing to do with a priority, just, it, it hit us.
Yeah.
You know, with the, the problem with the
Skate park.
Y- y- yeah, the problem with the, the school, the school system didn't build Camden Rockford correctly. I mean, that we didn't, it's not a priority for us. Those, and they take a lot of staff time. They take a lot of our lawyers' time too, so those, those things, that's just a normal course of running any entity. Um, but the ordinance thing, that's why I wanted to mention that, because that's one, it does take work, and we do have limited staff there too. And, and some orders take a lot more work than others.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the ordinance stuff is good to have common agreement around from the beginning, because nobody wants us working or spending a ton of time making ordinance amendments to an area where all of you don't agree it needs to change or don't wanna change in a certain way.
Exactly.
But I also think, you know, um, enforcement priorities are important too, because
Yeah.
you know, it's just not possible, the number of ordinances we have and everything that's within them to proactively enforce everything, so it's kind of figuring out where are the areas where there's a real deficit and you know, what are you getting complaints about as select board members and what do we, you know, what should we be focusing on more? Um, how do we, how do we be responsive to the complaints that you're getting?
Right, that's a huge one for me, because I, you know, in my conversations with both the Code Office and the Police Department, they're, you know, out there responding to what comes in to, to them. But I feel like I have to get more, you know, general types of concerns or concerns from people that aren't necessarily comfortable contacting the police or don't know how to contact the code enforcement office or um, so kind of figuring out a way that we can merge how much staff time goes into
I think that
various things.
Right, and, and then also, the third bucket of things are, um, you know, some of the larger initiatives that you know, they're at a point now where all of you really need to make a decision as to how we move it forward or, or not. And so I think with some of, you know, I think, um, the whole regionalization of public safety services is a big example of that.
Yeah.
And how, you know, how do we do that, so
Which also works to reduce costs and maintain services, if, if it's done correctly. But I, the thing, back just to cover the ordinance thing, I, if, a number of times, over the last couple of years, we, all of a sudden uh, I caught the good idea of the month thing came in, which is to make this change, this ordinance, it it came over the transit, I, I got everything, that, that's the same thing as when people come to me and say I think we should do this in the town, but a number of people will say, yeah, I, you know what, I never, never get a bad idea from the city. It's just a question we can handle, the bandwidth can handle or not. That's, most of the time, that's the truth. But I think the ordinance was one we've, we've sent a couple of times, but all of a sudden it became a priority and just came out of a good idea, but but, yeah, I, I think, and then, and then last just goes, I think they, they, and we talked about many times, the communication thing, I I think that's one comment I get more commonly than any other thing I hear from anybody, you know, as we and I'm not saying that they're doing the right things, and we're definitely not doing the right things, because we're just not getting information. It, it's, by the way, it's part of society today, it's part of the challenge today, we all face it. Sometimes like Thomaston has a full email list and some people don't like that, you know, but, but we, we need to do something. Maybe it's a newsletter, maybe it's, but, but we, I, I think the board needs to look to you, Audrey, and your experience and your staff's experience, what can have some chance of working and what doesn't.
Well, we're, I mean, on a you know, on a staff level, we're gonna try something different, and, um, I don't wanna talk about it until I've I've got something going, but anyway, we're gonna, we're gonna try something different, because it's just, it's not working when there's, you, you know, there's ten different departments that you need to get information from. Um, I, I don't really like the idea of doing like a, a newsletter quarterly, because I feel like by the time some of that information comes out, it's already out of date.
Yeah.
I think it, we need to do something monthly, um, we need to do something where we have sort of a group of people that have direct responsibility for it and we're able to sort of, you know, consolidate information and put it out there on a regular basis, so. Anyway, we're gonna try something different, but I don't wanna talk about it too much until we've got it up and going to some extent.
Cool, but I do think some, the idea that we only look to them for recommendations is, I
No, no, we shouldn't, we
I think that that's why we, like, our representatives of our community, and we are theoretically gonna collectively be good at knowing how people wanna receive information and what types of things we're looking for, so I think we should be actively, like, I think we have to do a newsletter, I mean, it's just, we just yeah, we've been relying for years and years on the newspaper, doing everything and people don't you know, people, not everybody uses that, so some form of a newsletter should be
I'm not sure, I mean, I, what, what is
Let's not debate it here, we, our, the action on Audrey's heavy flag to come back with recommendations, then
But I'll, but I just wanna make the point, we have a lot of blind spots, a ton of blind spots in terms of communication. I'd be the first to admit it, there's so many things that, um, it's really easy to kind of think, oh, well, you know, we've already sent this out, so everyone should know about it, and they don't for whatever reason, so that's where it's really important to get feedback from all of you on your, you know, what and how and where, and I think that, um, you know, Tom and Stephanie being new people on the board, you have even better insight into that than, you know, Bob and Alison, and maybe not as much Sophie, but, yeah.
But I can't, I can't express it right now.
Are there any, any other areas of the country we get evaluated on, number of years lived here or something, or just if you're newer to the board, then you have better
You know, you guys know where to look now, but for people who are kind of coming in fresh, it's good to be like, well, I don't know about that and no one else does, so don't rely on that to get your
Oh, yeah, no, I'm just like, let's hire somebody to do this, like
That's my whole point.
I do think more funding, like, funding for the staff that need to do it, rather than just trying the same old thing of like well, Audrey's just gonna prioritize her time better, and Audrey will stay later and
Well, yeah, that's important, and that's the thing, it's not, like I said, I, it can't just be like Janice and I trying to push this stuff out, that is definitely not gonna work, so.
Yeah, to me, it's somebody's job, like somebody, like you said, somebody's
Yeah, either a firm or someone, or I'll, uh, we'll talk about it when
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, she has something exciting to tell us soon, so we'll have
But I think it could work better than
With that, we're beating up our hour and a half, break discussion, great, we just have a complication it gets, but
We should do meetings like this more often, we empty the room.
Sorry, folks, that's the way it works. Anyway, um, thank you, and we'll see, we don't see you before, we'll see you a week
It's all right. I think it's all